Good evening and welcome to the May eighth Board of Education Special Board Meeting. And we'll start with a roll call from Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. All right, and we'll go do a pledge allegiance. And as we do at the start of every board meeting, we read our vision and mission statement. And our vision statement is achieving distinction in all that we do. While mission statement is cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. All right, next on the agenda for tonight is comments from the audience on agenda items.
Yes, we have one speaker this evening, Mrs. Okray.
Hello? Is it on?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Yes.
First of all, I just want to apologize that the board has already heard my speech, but I felt it was important enough that I share my thoughts with all administration, staff, and the general public. Both who are here in person and those hopefully keeping themselves informed via live stream. My name is Teresa Okray, and I want to thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak. As I told the board last week, the last time I spoke in front of the Board of Education was several years ago when I was honored with the Rotary Teacher Award for Berry Elementary. And fast forward to this afternoon, and I'm addressing you once again, but I'm waiting to hear my name be read as a teacher has been selected to be non-renewed. I have been teaching first grade for 29 years, and I have dedicated 16 years, more than half of my career, to the school district of Fort Atkinson. I know that we are in uncharted territory. I realize that no one wanted to be in the situation that we find ourselves, and I acknowledge that cuts have to happen. However, I have some concerns about the process, which seems questionable and subjective at best, that was used to determine where these cuts would be made. There are many questions that have remained unanswered for many people, not just myself. We were told at the board meeting on April 20th that there were many factors in the decision to non-renew certain employees, including licensure, flexibility, and job performance. However, the reasons that have come up at individual meetings have ranged from last hired, first fired, to not being a cultural fit, none of which apply to me. It has not been shared with us who the people were that were actually involved in the decisions. Was this truly a financial business decision? Or were there decisions made at the building level that were more personal in nature? Regardless of what criteria were or not used, the needs of the students should always be the number one consideration, and I don't believe that this solution puts them at the forefront. We know that there will be higher class sizes, more demands, and responsibilities with less staff. I strongly believe that this is not the time and place to be choosing inexperienced but less expensive staff to remain and work to achieve our strategic goals, handle classroom management, and maintain high program fidelity. I don't know what the future holds for this district and community, but it is hard for me to imagine that I will not be able to continue serving the families of Fort Atkinson in this capacity. In closing, I am only three years away from being eligible for retirement and one year away from being fully vested in the WRS, which should be a time of celebration and excited anticipation has become anything but. At the April 20th board meeting, one of the slides said that one of the strategies that will be used to cut spending is strategic abandonment. Well, mission accomplished because that sums up perfectly how it feels to be me. Thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you for your comments this evening. Next up, we're moving on to personnel.
Yes, we would ask that the board accept the resignation of Allison Parsons, 1.0 FTE agricultural teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle and High Schools.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the resignation requests effective at the end of the 2022-23 school year. Allison Parsons, 1 FTE agricultural teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School and High School. I saw move.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Bookta. All is in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, moving on to item B, final notices of non-renewal.
Yes, as the board and the community are certainly very aware that at an earlier meeting, preliminary notices of non-renewal were served to a number of different staff members. Some circumstances have changed for certain staff members since that time. What you have before you this evening is a resolution for the balance of those staff members that were not provided formal, final, rather, notices of non-renewal last week.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion in front of us. Is there any further discussion on this at all? And again, this is the balance of...
Yes, so there were four that were provided formal notices by board action last week, and then this is the remaining teachers.
Thank you.
Can we just be clear of why the action is being taken in two different ones?
Yes, it's due to the failed referendum. These are budgetary cuts.
No, I meant, I meant why we're taking two different actions, where there was action taken last week because during the closed meeting session, we were asked for private conferences. And then we went into open session, and there was a motion. And that's why the list is in two different, in two different forms.
Yes, so as, as you just described, the board, after private meetings with, with four staff members last week, came back into open session, which was noticed as such, and then took action to provide final notices of non-renewal to those, for those four teachers at that time. For the, those that are before you this evening were those that did not request such a private meeting last week.
Yeah, and that was Teresa Okray, Nicholas Toom, Heather Balsamo, and Stacy Bargums.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion about item B on our agenda this evening?
I, I, I just want to reiterate to the community how difficult this has been, how, for everyone involved. I mean, for the teachers getting the non-renewal notice, it is heartbreaking to have to do this. I said last time, it feels like I'm going to a funeral. It's on my mind.
Yeah.
24 hours a day. I mean, I've lost sleep over it, but it's not about me. I mean, I'm one of the five of us making decisions for the community, for the district, trying to position ourselves in the best way possible, understanding that the, it's going to look different, that we are losing staff with experience, and this is not a position that any of us wanted to be in. And I just, I, I feel like I can't reiterate that enough, that this is not being done lightly. This is not being done with any vindictiveness. This is just an incredibly difficult situation. I think I speak for all of us.
Yes.
But it's just incredibly difficult.
Absolutely.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more, but we have to keep in mind this is a direct result of the failed referendum. So this is what happens when people don't support public education. And it's too bad. But we have no choice.
Yeah, it's difficult to, you know, when, when this process started, it's, it's now difficult to, to understand everything that's kind of happened in the last number of months. And, and the last month has gone, has gone very quickly for everybody here. I echo those same sentiments that Robin said. It's, you know, you know, it's, it's not, it's not, it's clearly not just us losing sleep. It's, it's obviously the educators, the admissions, it's everybody, you know, throughout this community losing sleep and, and trying to figure out what's next here. And so, you know, as I sit up here, it's, it's, you know, I thought about this, driving into work, coming home from work today, and, and beyond that really. So it's, this has been a difficult process for all involved. And I just wish we were under different, you know, just wish we could change things how, you know, in the last month, but that's, you know, the community has spoken loudly of, of the direction that we need to be going here. And unfortunately, we're in this situation, but, you know, we are here.
Well, ultimately, it's the children that are going to suffer.
Yeah.
So with the motion in front of us, be it resolved that a final notice of non-renewal be issued to the following teachers: Penny Bright, Holly Dow, Peter Finnegan, Megan Green, Sarah Horwath, Ronald Huber, Tracy Copan, Lisa Perkins, Jennifer Rank, Samantha Trez, and Kim Westby. And I apologize if I said anyone's name incorrectly.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Ms. Rogers, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, Dr. Abbott, moving on to item C on our personnel this evening.
Yes, we'll invite Mrs. Turnbull down to the podium. She will be providing the board a presentation on approval of the 2023-24 compensation system. Hopefully looking force your consideration at the end of her presentation this afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Andy Turnbull, Director of Human Resources, and this afternoon I'm going to be providing you with a compensation update for the 2023-24 fiscal year. In order to paint the picture of compensation as a whole, today I'm going to be referring back to the board's strategies to meet priority, priorities, then discuss compensation, insurance, including health and voluntary benefits, and next steps. As you've probably recall, we've discussed in-depth strategies that the board approved a year or so ago in order to meet priorities. Here, you can see the strategies that the Board of Education asked us to use to meet our strategic priorities as we considered budget decisions and impacts. The strategy my presentation will be focusing on this afternoon is this first strategy here. This strategy has been a focus and challenge for the past two years as inflation has been rising. Our overarching strategy in our work, even following the failure of our operational referendum on April 4th, has been to preserve compensation and benefit packages for our employees to ensure we are competitive in attracting and retaining high-quality team members to serve the children and families of Fort Atkinson. As we've shared at recent board meetings, we will be asking team members that are continuing their employment with us to take on more responsibilities as we move forward in our strategic plan with less staff. Compensating these team members at a fair and competitive level will be necessary to retain those employees that will continue with us next year and beyond. So first, we'll discuss compensation. For those of you who may not have been on the board when our compensation system was implemented, I'd like to share a brief history with you. Our current compensation system was implemented in 2015-16 based on three mutual interests. First, attract and retain high-quality employees. Second, reward for doing a good job and cost of living adjustment. And third, honor experience and longevity. Our compensation system is a market-based system in which we gather new data every year for every position using data from our comparable districts. Each employee group has a set of comparables which takes into account factors such as size, distance, and so on. Our system is a living system which consistently evolves and allows through an appeals process the opportunity for adjustments to be made each year as the environment changes and the system further develops. We have a lot to celebrate when it comes to our compensation system. First, we use real data in all hiring decisions, which keeps us consistent in our practices as well as competitive with our comparable districts. Second, all of our employees know their market rates based on real data, so they know they're being compensated fairly and in line with what their peers are making in other districts. We are also able to make decisions about compensation adjustment requests using current-year market data and a formal appeals process, which engages multiple individuals by way of the board versus one or two individuals, and is used to consider growth opportunities within the system. Finally, the use of market comparable data is continuing to grow and expand as a regional, and more recently even a statewide effort with over 50 participating districts. The school district of Fort Atkinson has been highlighted within that initiative for our sustained and systematic use of this data. Before we dive into the specifics related to the market analysis for this year, I'd like to share with you the system enhancement and recommendations to keep in mind as we move forward. Currently, there are a group of staff within the certified staff group who are not credited with their full years of experience upon hire. This is because prior to our current compensation system, staff who were hired into the district with more than seven years of outside experience did not get credit for their full years of experience. Following the adoption of our current compensation system, staff hired into the district receive credit for all outside years of experience with no cap. This has been inequitable for staff who have a proven record of longevity in and dedication to both education and our district. The proposed system enhancement for 2023-24 fiscal year would be to credit those individuals with their full years of experience prior to being hired into the school district of Fort Atkinson, beginning with the 2023-24 school year and beyond. Ultimately, this will put all of our certified staff members on an even playing field and work to ensure that our staff are being fairly and equitably compensated compared to their peers, helping us to honor our commitment to competitive compensation and hopefully reward us by retaining our current staff. This will also serve to honor the mutual interests that the compensation system was founded on, which include attract and retain high-quality employees and honor experience and longevity. As our system has and will continue to grow and mature, it's important that we make adjustments to continue to honor these priorities. I believe this costs to be minimal in comparison to the value add they will provide related to supporting the retention of our staff. The recommendations for the 2023-24 fiscal year are to provide both full market increases and full longevity increases to all eligible staff. Now, let's dive into what those recommended enhancements and recommendations actually look like by staff group. Here, you can see the analysis for our administrative group, which includes both certified and non-certified administrators. We were able to use current-year data from 15 out of our 18 comparable districts, with one-year-old data being used for the remaining three. Here, you will see an overall wage increase of .38%. For our certified staff group, we were able to collect current-year data from 13 out of our 16 comparable districts. Year-old data was used for the remaining three districts. For our certified staff group, we see an overall market increase of 1.26%. A couple of points of interest are the average increase between five-year bands, which is 8.43%, or $4,898, and the average difference between bachelor's and master's degrees, which is $4,935. This information is paramount in expressing to staff the value of their dedication and longevity to the district and their careers as well as the monetary value of continuing their education. Finally, we have our support staff analysis, which shows an overall wage increase of .48%. What is most exciting about this data is that we continue to use actual pay data for specific employees in very specific roles to determine our hiring medians, compared to not that many years ago when this group's data was collected and analyzed using pay scales requested annually from other districts. Year over year, this data continues to become more accurate, which I believe is evidenced by our alignment to median values within our market analysis. Taking a look at all of the data together, you can see that we projected a 5.0% increase within the budget. This 5% includes an anticipated 1% for market adjustments, and as you can see, we ended up with exactly that. Now, to recap the system enhancements and recommendations I shared with you prior to the market analysis financial data, we're proposing the following. Consideration of approval of credited years for certified staff to account for all previous experience as an enhancement to the compensation system, and approval of the recommendation to provide both a full market increase as well as full longevity increases to all eligible staff. We'll continue our compensation work moving forward as we begin negotiations with FIA and consideration of other staff groups with regard to any potential cost of living adjustments in the months to come. Of the staff groups just discussed, certified staff are issued contracts annually for their positions as approved by the board. With that, we're requesting that the board approve the issuance of these contracts for the certified staff group, including the compensation adjustments as proposed and additional, and additional adjustment as outlined on this slide. Finally, contracts will be issued to all certified staff as professionally-trained educators rather than containing specific assignments. This adjustment will put us in greater alignment with other districts as well as legal recommendations. Here, we'll transition from compensation to insurance. As a reminder, in addition to providing competitive compensation, providing a competitive benefits package is one of the board's strategies to meet priorities and is a major driver of recruitment and retention. In this portion of my presentation, I'm going to talk about benefits as a true package. First, talking a bit about our health insurance, and then sharing some enhancements to our voluntary benefit offerings. As we do have some newer board members, I'll provide just a brief history for you related to our health insurance over the past several years. Historically, the district had an HRA, or Health Reimbursement Arrangement, plan, which was a very traditional and high-cost plan for a number of years. We added an HSA, or Health Savings Account, plan option for 2019-20 to control rising premium costs. We also added our school employee wellness clinic in 2021-22 as an opportunity to mitigate costs, but also to provide our staff and their dependents with more timely and affordable access to care for things like illness, chronic condition management, immunizations, labs, annual physicals, and other screenings. Unfortunately, those measures weren't quite enough to keep up with the rising cost of healthcare and our poor plan performance. So following the expiration of our rate cap, we saw a 15.9% renewal increase for our 2022-2023 plan year. As a result of such a significant increase, the decision was made to phase out the HRA plan offering and move all of our staff to the HSA plan, beginning with the 2022-2023 school year, which was this current school year. So where are we now? Knowing that we had to make some adjustments so we didn't end up in the same place again this year with a 15.9% rate increase, we transitioned to a new benefits broker, Cottingham &amp; Butler, in October of 2022. This change has helped us to shift focus from a one-size-fits-all approach to benefits to a more personalized approach to the needs of the school district of Fort Atkinson to allow us to identify opportunities for cost savings and efficiencies. I'm excited to share that through this transition, we've seen an improvement in our health plan performance, shifting from 114% medical loss ratio at our last renewal to an 88% loss ratio at our current renewal. We saw a 7.9% rate increase for our plan renewal, which is about half of our renewal increase from just a year ago. So what is our plan for 2023-24 to maintain our momentum in controlling costs while providing competitive benefits for our staff? First, there will be absolutely no plan design or coverage changes for our employee health plan. Second, we'll continue our current employee-employer premium share split, where our staff pay 12.6% of the premium for health insurance, and the district pays the remaining 87.4% of the premium cost. We'll also continue to fund our staff health savings accounts at the same amount and on the same schedule as this year, which is $2,750 for an employee enrolled in a single plan and $5,500 for an employee enrolled in a family plan. We found that moving to a semi-annual deposit schedule with half being deposited on September 1st and half being deposited on March 1st to be a successful strategy, with staff being appreciative that their contributions were front-loaded enough to cover expenses early on in the plan year. We will, of course, also continue to allow for an acceleration of the HSA deposits for staff who have high-cost pharmaceutical expenses. Finally, we're planning to continue our work to control costs for the district and for staff for this year and beyond. We'll do that by continuing to educate staff on consumerism by providing information on costs for care at various locations. So think emergency room versus urgent care versus office visit and so on. Information on prescription costs and generic drug options, and promoting our partnership with the school employee wellness clinic, where staff can be seen for a $30 office visit and a $5 lab charge. Although voluntary benefits are not something that I would typically discuss during this presentation, we are making some changes for the 2023-24 school year that I think are important to highlight related to our strategy to provide a competitive benefits package for current and future staff. You can see here our current voluntary benefit offerings. The district pays in full for eligible staff dental insurance and long-term disability insurance, and pays 90% of the premium for life insurance. Staff have the option to purchase one of two vision insurance plans and short-term disability insurance at their own cost. These benefits are comparable to those offered in other districts. We have received questions from staff in the past about offering other voluntary benefits. However, our available, our ability to offer those additional voluntary benefits have been limited by a very paper-based and manual enrollment process. I'm very excited to share with you that through extensive work with our new benefit consultants, we've been able to put together a cost-neutral and much more robust and comprehensive benefit package of voluntary benefits for our staff to have access to, beginning with the 2023-24 school year. I believe this will set us apart from other school districts in our area who have not made the move to offering these more progressive benefit options to their staff. Effective September 1st of 2023, we will be partnering with Sun Life for all of our non-medical benefits, which will allow us to enhance benefits for our staff while providing better overall protection. As you can see on this slide, we have a number of new or enhanced benefit offerings for staff. So I'll just highlight a few that I think are of note. Our life insurance will be changing from a 90% employer-paid benefit to a 100% employer-paid benefit, and we will be moving from a life insurance-only benefit to a life insurance and AD&amp;D, or accidental death and dismemberment, benefit. Our long-term disability benefit will now cover partial and recurrent disabilities where an employee had to be totally disabled previously in order to be eligible for a benefit. The short-term disability insurance will have a much higher guarantee issue amount, so staff will be able to enroll without being subject to medical underwriting. Additional, this policy will also now allow for partial and recurrent disabilities where in the past it did not. We'll be offering new voluntary life insurance benefit to all employees working at least 20 hours per week, and that will allow staff the option to purchase additional life insurance for themselves, their spouse, and their children. Accident insurance will be new this year as well to all staff working at least 20 hours per week or more, and that would pay out a benefit for staff and their families in the event of an accidental injury such as dislocation, fracture, burn, or more. And finally, critical illness insurance will be new and available to all staff working again at least 20 hours per week, and that provides a benefit for staff and their families in the event of a critical illness diagnosis to cover expenses such as treatments, prescriptions, travel, increased living expenses, and more. We'll be able to administer enrollment into these benefits by using a self-service benefit administration system called Employee Navigator, which will allow ongoing 24/7 access for employees to view their enrollments, premiums, and information on plan design. We'll be rolling this system out in just a few weeks during our open enrollment for the 2023-24 plan year, and we've already begun our communication campaign with staff related to those changes. Looking forward, the board, board approval is required on some of the items I discussed in my presentation this afternoon. this afternoon. Here, you can see the resolutions for your consideration today. First are the proposed 2023-24 compensation adjustments, which provides for an adjustment to market median and longevity for all staff groups, as well as the enhancement beginning with the 2023-24 school year to correct credited years for certified staff to include all credited years. Second would be issuance of certified staff contracts, which according to state statute must be issued no later than May 15th. The benefit adjustments do not require board approval, however, were provided as information as you look at our compensation and benefits package as a whole. And with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Could you tell me how the HRA program works?
The one that's been phased out?
Or is it HSA? Am I getting?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we have a high deductible health plan, and partnered with that is a health savings account. So, our health plan has a 3,000, single 6,000, family deductible, and then staff receive the deposit of $2,750 or $5,500 annually into their health savings account.
And that's pre-tax?
Yes.
Okay.
They can also opt to contribute additional, to cover additional expenses, and then those funds can be used to cover any medical expenses, including deductible. If they're not used, they would continue to carry over and accrue, and then if the employee were to leave employment, that account would go with them.
Would it also include pharmaceuticals, drugs?
Yes. Yep, that would cover expenses for pharmaceuticals, and then pharmaceuticals do go toward our health plan deductible.
And the insurance is for a year, I take it, calendar year, or is it just the school year?
Nope, it is a 12-month. So, certified staff, for example, any certified staff member who is resigning or retiring at the end of this school year would continue to have access to their district-sponsored health insurance through August 31st. And our plan year does run from September 1st through August 31st, so people are not seeing a disruption to their deductible during that cycle.
And that would include the teachers that were non-renewing, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
My next question, I don't know if I'm going to phrase it correctly, but we non-renewed a number of employees, and that ends with certain cost savings to the district. Now, we have adjustments on the other side for compensation. Can you give me a feeling of what the net savings is from the non-renewals minus the compensation package you're suggesting yet?
I don't know that we'd be prepared to do that.
Okay.
I mean, as part of the budget reduction package that we presented a few weeks ago, I mean, I can't recall there was an item, line item related to staffing at those parts of it.
And that included the adjustments?
So, all of our forecasting has included a 5% increase in compensation. So, of that 5% that's built into our forecasting of budgets for next year, this would represent 1 of the 5%.
Okay.
Am I being somewhat clear there?
Yeah.
So, this was accounted for in the projections for next year's budget.
And that's what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah.
How does our compensation package and insurance compare to other districts?
I would say we're competitive. One of the nice things about our compensation, particularly for certified staff, is that it offers staff certainty down the road because we have our five-year bands and then the bachelors to masters. So, if somebody's coming to employment with us, say with nine years of experience, they will know for certain that they're not going to make less than X dollars the following year as they progress through those bands. I would say the majority of other districts don't offer that type of certainty related to migration through their system. As far as benefits goes, we were one of the earlier districts to no longer have a rate cap. A lot of other districts are now seeing their rate caps expire, and because of people not getting preventative care during COVID, the rising cost of health insurance, staffing in the medical field, and so on, those costs are simply continuing to rise. So, other districts are seeing now this year or maybe next year that 15% to 16% renewal that we experienced last year. The nice thing is, is we were able to make some adjustments, so staff didn't see much of an impact on costs to them, and we were able to keep their benefits relatively intact. I have seen other districts, either last year or this year, that are discussing either adding decrements to their plan design, so increasing co-pays, reducing HSA seating, or adjusting the employee or employee cost share percentage, which we have been able to keep intact.
Has the deductible insurance plan stayed fairly consistent, and then our contribution to the HSA, the $2,750 on the 3,000 individual deductible plan, has that stayed fairly consistent over the last few years?
Yes, since the implementation of the HSA plan, the deductible and the district contribution to the HSA has remained exactly the same. We have changed from four deposits throughout the year to make up that HSA funding to two deposits during the year, which gives staff earlier access to those funds, which we've seen a good response to.
But the premium went up 7.9%, which was a 7.9% increase on the employer percentage as well as the employee percentage?
Yes, so the entire, the 100% goes up the 7.9%. Then, of that 100%, it gets divided out.
And is it typical for other districts to recognize all years of experience, or is it typically capped, what you're recommending tonight in terms of a change to it? That you said it's capped, right now we have it capped at seven years of experience?
So, we actually don't have it capped at seven years of experience now. If you look to the years prior to when our compensation system was implemented, anyone prior to that who came in with more than seven years of experience was given full credit for their first seven and then half a year credit for some number after that, and then no credit for years exceeding. So, this only impacts about 16 staff members. Anyone who came in with seven years or less of credit was awarded that. Anyone who's been hired since 2015 with more than seven years of credit has been awarded all of their years. So, this is really just to create consistency between all of our employees.
Okay, so there was a short period of time where there was this scaled experience model that was implemented for how much experience a person coming into the district had?
Yes, I believe that was contained in the collective bargaining agreement, which also dictated our compensation system prior to the current one that we operate under. And then, when our current system was implemented, it was written as such that anyone, that staff got the number of years that they were credited upon hire, rather than adjusting existing staff to be consistent with how we were going to treat new staff.
So, it'd be a one-time change for those staff that fall into that category, who will be in the 2023-24 school year, because it already takes into account, because already other staff hired last year or hired, you know, going into next year?
Yes, so this will be a one-time adjustment for the 2023-2024 school year to get them at the correct number of years, and then each year going forward, their number would increment by one, just like the rest of our staff.
And then, the percentage increases, the .38% for admin, 1.26% for certified staff, and .48%, that you're asking as a compensation adjustment to equalize based on where you see the pay should be across other, what you see in other districts of similarly sized school systems?
Correct. So, we have sat districts that we use as our comparables. We've done all of the analysis, which, trust me, is incredibly tedious and boring. And we develop what our market medians are. So, those percentage adjustments, if someone is at or below that market median, it would move them up to the median amount. In addition, if somebody were to move between our longevity bands, so those five-year bands, they would get a longevity adjustment. And then, I think in this particular case, we had one person who has also earned their master's degree and is moving from their bachelor's to their master's on our compensation model.
And if approved, when would this take place?
For 12-month staff, it would take place July 1st, 2023. For school year staff, it would take place effective with the start of the 23-24 school year.
One of the reasons it's before you this evening is that with your next action, hopefully in issuance of certified staff contracts, these updates would be included in a more accurate compensation amount for employees to consider as they're receiving their contracts. Of course, this is prior to any CPI considerations through negotiations later, but this is a step for some greater clarity for some staff as well.
That's a good point. How do those negotiations with CPI dovetail into this compensation package?
Sure, so last year, we actually did the negotiation piece concurrent to the market adjustment for the system. So, that was actually at your April board meeting last year. And given the circumstances clearly with referendum and reductions and everything else, and perhaps to a similar degree, the question marks related to the biennial budget, most districts are deferring or are waiting to enter into that negotiation until summer or months down the road. So, the board will be able to weigh in as to when they would like to activate negotiations, which we're clearly anxious to do once we have a greater sense of what those numbers could look like for us to achieve many of the goals that Mrs. Turnbull has been talking about this evening, but also get that settled for staff and know what those numbers would be for their compensation next year.
Is CPI rates based on what occurred this year or?
It's for the 12 months, yes, it's for last calendar year.
And there's no requirement of a date for when?
There is not. I mean, and we're, there is not. And so, I guess, just in loose, formal conversation, I mean, we have no interest in waiting any longer than we need to. We also need to have some answers, particularly related to the state budget. You know, as Mandy stated at the beginning and as we talked about at the last meeting, as horrendous as this last month has been with budget reductions, I believe we're all committed to compensation such that makes us not just competitive, but a destination in some regard in these areas as well. So, this isn't something that, I think in some districts that they delay, 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 and I'm not sure we have any interest in doing that once we have some additional information to augment what we have presently.
And I think you stated this before, but I just want to make it clear, the budget forecast that we've been showing, meeting after meeting after meeting, that shows where our deficit is without the referendum passing, that includes a projection for increase in pay as well as increases in insurance that we anticipate happening.
So, that showed a total compensation increase of 5%. So, historically speaking, there may have been years where it was less than 5%, or there could have been years where there was board action that took it beyond the 5%. But in all of our forecasting and all of the projections that Mr. Demerath and others have done for years, we've always built in numbers that are somewhat factual to real life as opposed to taking those lines out and then being surprised they happen later or inflating them for different reasons. So, in this case, that 5% is built in, as it has been in the past. Of that 5%, 1% of that is represented in your potential action this afternoon with the compensation system, which eerily was projected to be 1%, and it's literally 1%.
1.26, sorry.
To answer your-
No, it's 1.26 is related to the certified staff adjustment. The overall system adjustment is 1.0.
And to answer your question about the insurance projection, Mr. Demerath had used a placeholder of 10% going into our renewal. Once our renewal came back, I think it was in March, at 7.9%, he adjusted his projections to be right at 7.9%. So, any projections you've seen from him in the last couple of months have our insurance renewal exactly where it's at.
7.9% seems reasonable.
I would say right now, that would be, it's very reasonable. I mean, that's within what districts with rate caps are seeing.
There are many, many, many districts, I think, that all of us are talking to that have lost their rate cap this year or know they are next year, that are in the very same spot that we were last year with between a 15 and 19 even percent increase. So, for us to have handled that in the manner with which we did last spring has definitely positioned us to be in a better renewal rate, and that will fluctuate greatly potentially based on claims from year to year. So, that prediction is complicated at best.
You think the failure of the referendum will affect the rate increase for next year?
I think as long as we pay the bill, that it wouldn't really have a direct impact.
And are there any projections given to us from the new broker that we're using for insurance in terms of future, future, and there's no cap, like, oh, it will only go up one, two, three points? It's whatever the market?
Correct. Historically, insurance companies would offer multi-year rate caps. We're not seeing that anymore. So, as other districts are seeing their multi-year rate cap expire, just as we were not offered a new one, they are not being offered new rate caps either.
Mandy, can you clarify a little bit further with the band when it comes to having your bachelor's degree and your master's degree, and how is there like, do you need to somehow file that you're going to get your master's? How long does it take before you move up to that band? Do you guys give them a limited time to get to that point in order to kind of move themselves? I mean, that would be somewhat of a lease control?
Sure. So, we do adjustments twice a year. You may recall from the January board meeting, we did mid-year adjustments, and so at that point, we would look at anybody who was perhaps a semester graduate who earned their master's degree, or of course, has like a half a year of experience that then bumps up mid-year. And then, we would prorate for the remainder of the year that adjustment. Otherwise, we do that as well annually during our compensation adjustment. Certainly, if someone were to end up with their master's degree between now and, you know, the end of the school year, we would certainly honor that for next year's compensation. We don't require staff to let us know ahead of time or file any paperwork related to them working toward their master's degree. We simply require transcripts, once they've earned their master's degree, showing that that has been conferred to update their record.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any further questions at all this evening?
The only other thing I wanted to clarify is you said that in the changes or the adjustments in the kind of other benefits, that that was a net zero in terms of the not 90% life insurance, but 100% life insurance paid by the district, but then also, I'm sorry, yeah, life insurance, the adding of accidental death and dismemberment, and then the other programs that are employee-paid. But you said that's a net zero add for those benefits that are district-paid?
Yes, related to our overall voluntary benefit spend, the adjustments to all of those, as well as the addition of Employee Navigator, ended up being net zero because of some different things that our broker was able to negotiate for us, and also the adjustment to the new vendor that we're going to be working with, which is Sun Life. We have confirmed that anyone who is currently on our short-term, long-term disability, what have you, will be covered for claims through August, and then there will be a seamless transition to that new broker. If someone were to go out on claim in September, we did confirm that they would have credit for that prior coverage, and we wouldn't run into any type of like pre-existing condition issue or anything like that. So, we've made sure that our employees are well-cared-for and shouldn't see any- So we've made sure that our employees are well-cared-for and shouldn't see any disruption to that. In fact, following our transition should see an even more seamless claims experience should they need to utilize it.
Well, and more people should be able to access those benefits based on the flexibility within those policies as well.
Absolutely.
I mean, without getting in, into extreme detail, there's a far more flexibility, and I think many more staff members will be able to actually reap the benefit of the benefit, given some of those flexibilities.
Sure. All righty, we have a motion in front of us if there's no further questions.
Be resolved that the school district of Fort Atkinson adopt the following compensation structure for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year that practices from the implementation of the compensation model in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three be carried forward. Increase staff pay rates, which were identified to be below their respective market value analysis median to their market value analysis median, approximately one hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars for all staff. Recognize another year of service towards market value placement for certified staff and longevity salary adjustment for all groups, approximately ten thousand, two hundred and four dollars for all groups other than certified staff market value placement adjustments. Credit certified staff with all years of service prior to hire. That no adjustment in pay be awarded to those having an active improvement plan on their first day of work in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
Second.
All right, do we have a motion by Ms. Bookta, a second by Ms. Selly, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, moving on to individual certified staff contracts, Dr. Abbott.
Yes, so this is the second of your actions this evening related to these matters. This will allow the district to issue contracts by the May fifteenth deadline, as Ms. Turnbull described a few minutes ago.
And there is obviously a template that is on board docs for review, if you haven't already ever seen.
Be resolved that the Board of Education approve the issuance of individual employment contracts for certified staff for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I still move.
I'll second.
All right, have a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All righty, that brings us to the last item of the meeting. Anybody?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Selly, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and those opposed. All right, adjourn at five twenty-one.